All rise, hear ye, hear ye. The Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cuchon presiding. Please remain standing.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to have everyone with us as we open up our Hamlin County Legislative Body regular meeting, our regular monthly meeting for August 24th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Hansman to open us in prayer.
It'll be one twenty-one. Do not fear or be discouraged. Many of your favorite hymns tell us what to do when we are discouraged. One old favorite hymn says, "When you're discouraged, thinking all is lost, count you many blessings and name them one by one." Another hymn says, "His eyes on the sparrow, and I know he watches me." What a friend we have in Jesus. When we are burdened, take it to the Lord in prayer. When we are discouraged, remember that a moment in the presence of the Lord can change your attitude. Count your blessings, realize the value in God, and take it to Him in prayer. Do not fear or be discouraged. Now let us pray. Father, we just thank you that we're able to call upon you in a need of prayer and bring us out of the, when we're depressed and we have trouble and what's going on. Guide us and direct us in the way that we need to go. Protect us in every way. Have your angels watch over us. Bless our commissioners and help us to always give the answers that you would want us to get. Help us be wise in what we do. Guide us and direct us in every direction we go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Noddy, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir. By supplication, attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated.
Oh, Christ God.
Commissioners, commissioners, if you will, please turn on your mics so we may be heard on our video recording. Let's call the road, please. And we are all here and accounting for, we are open for business. Before we get started, folks, I'd like to recognize the Marsh Town area Chamber of Commerce, Adult Leadership Group. If y'all would, please stand for us tonight. Thank y'all for being here. We'll move right into business. We have none on number one and number two. Kyle, would you please, sir? For anyone new to our commission, we have sign-in sheets if you'd like to speak to this commission where you're called upon in order that it's listed, but if you still would desire to speak to this commission, you have that opportunity. Once these folks are done and you just announce your name and address, and you have three minutes to do so.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, folks, before we get started, we've got eight listed. We should be good. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission concerning non-agenda items? You may come to the podium, announce your name and address, and you have three minutes to do so. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this commission? Seeing none, we will move to item two B. Items, public comments on items regarding agenda items only. I have a list here, and we will call by order. First one, please, Linda Jefferson. That's all right. You tell us what's on your heart. You've got three minutes. Have you, are y'all ready?
The wheel tax with my young'un, with cars, he goes through them like Carter's got liver pills. I mean, one car tear up, I have to go and get another one, a used car. And, you know, them wheel tax, and you get a whole bunch of cars, they gonna really mount up, young'un. But these people, they know more about it than I do. I'm not a very good speaker, but they have got, you can tell, they got, they got it. I'm just a country girl, but I'm telling you, when them kids get them cars out racing or whatever, and you have to buy another car, and then you have to buy, you know, more wheel tax and everything, and it's rough, young'un. But I appreciate you talking to me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I love everyone that enjoys our session.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Number two on the agenda, Alan Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Alan Brooks. I live at 4201 Whit Acres Circle. I was at your last meeting, and when the subject of the additional wheel tax was brought up, at first I thought I was in favor of that. But I went back and looked at the school budget, and I see in that budget where there was $20 million projected, but only $17 million was allocated to the schools. So in my opinion, we could take that additional money, move it to the school budget, and reduce the amount of the property tax and use that for our paving. I know we all need our roads paved, but there is a way of doing it without an additional wheel tax. And I've talked to some of my neighbors in Whit Acres, and they're not in favor of this. And I'm not in favor of this. And the reason is, we already have the money. And some have said that, you know, this could only be done one time. I disagree with that. We can do it year after year. And every time I look around, I see houses being built, apartments being built, new businesses coming into here, our sales tax revenue is increasing, our property tax is increasing. Look, we can do this simply by moving that money over, and we will not shortchange our school budget. We don't want to shortchange our school budget. We want them to have the money that they should have. I would also like to note that the school received 13 million additional dollars this year due to the new state funding and TISA, T-I-S-A. So we can do this. And I would ask that this commission vote no on passing this wheel tax. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak because we all should take part in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Let's keep order, please. Number three, Mr. John Cox, sir.
Mike John Cox, 3121 Three Springs Road. First, I want to say I sent emails, text messages, and Facebook message to all 14 commissioners. And I want to thank the six that replied back to me that acknowledged it. It was appreciated. I'm against the proposed wheel tax as it's submitted. I think it ought to just be called a registration tax, not a wheel tax. Want to go wheel tax, tax each wheel that you're putting on the road. I'll get to that in a little bit. But I was told that the budgeted, that school budget money, the two point some million, could not be allocated. But I would like to see that go through as an amendment to this. I'd like y'all to vote no on the wheel tax, but consider voting Mrs. Howell's plan, the way it was proposed, if only for one year. You know, I mean, you've got the excess money in another fund that you could use if the school runs into trouble. You can use that. It would save on people being taxed extra on their vehicles. And I feel as an alternative to the sales tax, if the sales tax is not feasible, go with the mileage fee. I've heard from one commissioner that people aren't going to be honest. Well, that's true. But when they go to finally sell and title that car, and you got to put the mileage on, you catch them at the end if they're not honest. Go with the, you know, if you have to go that route, with the maximum wheel tax of $23 for the roads, and then credit low mileage vehicles, say somebody like myself that's retired, that doesn't drive a lot. All right, so I might only pay $20. That's still a little saving, so you got to compromise somewhere. And on that, on that note too, if somebody's driving for a living, they're still only going to be paying the $23. You know, you don't penalize them for having a delivery service type job. But another option, too, is, as I say, a wheel tax is per wheel. And base it on, base it on the four wheels car or light truck. And I would like to see motorcycles or three-wheelers have a little discount. And then if you have a big truck, and I'm talking even some that you register as a truck that's got duly wheels on it, the reason you got duly wheels is because you're hauling heavier loads. Amend that, pay a little bit more. And then even possibly hit into the commercial trucks, too. I mean, I come down Three Springs Road and four dump trucks pass me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. John Cox. Mr. Cook, you are recognized, sir.
Well, here we are again. I'm standing in front of 14 Republicans and our Republican Hamlin County mayor. And we're sitting here talking about increasing taxes on the citizens of this county. When we've had the growth that we've had, we know there's extra money coming in from property taxes, sales taxes, all of the revenue from the new restaurants built. You're not fooling anyone. Here's what it gets down to. Every time, every year, that you vote for a budget and you increase that budget, you're saying that the size of government in Hamlin County is not large enough when you increase that budget. And you've done it year after year after year. Last year, our Republican mayor run for reelection and stated that the county was in great financial shape and had the largest fund reserve that we'd ever had, even after building this $100 million jail. And most of y'all said that would not affect our taxes, but now you don't have money to pave the roads. This is what you're going to do. You're going to vote on this, to raise taxes. I don't want to ever hear anybody in the Hamlin County Republican Party talk about taxing spend Democrats. Because that's what you're doing, but you accuse them of it. You know better. So if you vote for this and you want to know what's killing the Republican Party, look in the mirror. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Pellegrin, you have three minutes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to change the subject to something different right now. It's about the bulk weight thing. Last meeting, we talked about putting it to the zone for checking everything for the code enforcement officer. Well, I found out we only have one code enforcement officer in the county, so we're kind of putting a big burden on one person. So we're talking about somebody going to look at something, and we're talking about 10 days, it actually could be about 30 days. So you got 30 days or something, so you might consider putting it in a different department or, I hate to say, but hire another enforcement, code enforcement officer. I'd say with you. And I've had something else on there, but I think it's a non-agenda, so I could talk about next month if you refer.
Yeah, that's fine. You had abandoned vehicles on the street. It's not really. Thank you, Mr. Pellegrin. Ms. Noe, you are recognized.
I don't know that I can do much more than what Mr. Brooks and Mr. Cook did. They handled it very well. But I'll do my best. For three straight years, this commission, or prior commission, some of you were on the prior commission, has reduced the property tax for the schools. How did you manage to do that and keep the schools fully funded? Most of the time, you took from the sales tax bucket. Using Mr. Britton's alliteration, that he spoke about buckets of money. This is sales tax money from the taxpayers. As Mr. Brooks said, there is projec, well, not projected, but roughly $20 million was collected for school sales tax at the end of this previous year, fiscal year '23. Mr. Brooks said, you only budgeted $17.6 million of that for the schools. So that means there's still $2.3 million sitting in the sales tax bucket. This is the money we're talking about that can be used, just like Mr. Britton did for the jail. This can be used for paving. And it's a simple process. You take money from the sales tax that's sitting here, extra, you put it over in the school budget. Then you go to the property tax that's in the school budget, and you take that money and put it into paving. It's just a swap. But for the taxpayers, it means no wheel tax, but paving does get done. $2.2 million, per Ms. Howell's plan, it could be more, since there's actually more in that bucket, but $2.2 million would do a lot of paving, a lot more than a wheel tax, because if you've calculated the wheel tax you're talking about, it would only bring in 1.4 million. So why are we wanting to do a wheel tax and burden our citizens when the money is sitting here and you just need to do what Mr. Britton did? He took sales tax money, put it in the school budget, took out property tax money in the schools, and put it in the jail. As Mr. Brooks said, take out sales tax money, put it in the schools, take out property tax money, put it into paving. And you've got more money than you would ever have with your wheel tax. And as far as keeping it there, you have to vote every year to put money anywhere, whether it's paving, or the general fund, or whatever. So it's up to you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Holden, you are recognized.
My name is Gwen Holden. I live at 8150 West Point Drive. I don't want a wheel tax increase, and I am blessed. I really am. And I thank God for that, too. But I don't want a wheel tax increase. You don't have to have one. Why have it? If you can do it for Mr. Britton, why can't you do it for Ms. Howell? And she's, she just wants to save the taxpayers some money. You all should want to do that, too. Please, do not pass the wheel tax, not when you've got money that you can use.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Horner, you are recognized.
I'm going to read something that I posted today on my Facebook page about the wheel tax proposal. First of all, there's a solution to avoid it altogether. And I believe the reason that you are avoiding it is because certain people are asking you to do it. I think it's as simple as that. That's one reason. And the truth is, most of, well, all of you all ask for your constituents' votes at campaign time, and you seem to be so upstanding and wonderful, and then you turn around and you vote yourself a raise, and you vote to increase, to give us a new tax. Just when people are struggling more than ever, more than I can ever remember, you're stabbing your constituents in the back. Did you ever think about that, or does that matter?
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in our audience that would like to address this commission? You may do so by coming to the podium, announce your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Eddie Cox. I've got a few things I'd like to say. Might be out of order. Do tell me. I'm for the wheel tax, Kyle. I guess I'll make everybody's mad in here. You think what the wheel tax is going to do every year? You don't know what it's going to do. I did some checking. You and Ms. Peggy over there, Henderson, how many people buy tags? How many people, you go right up here to this house and see how many cars sitting in there? They don't have to pay property taxes. If you ain't going to get taxes on wheel tax, property tax is going to be next. I'm 75 years old. I have paid that taxes since I was 18 years old, working. I'm still working. I'm still paying taxes. I don't like taxes, but I got to pay for them. I got stuff right here. Can I pass this round to the committee and let you look at them?
Send it over to Kyle there, letting him pass it out.
I got five, I'm on that side. I need two right here. I got two right here, both. I know he's in the voice, I'll go make sure he's going to hint to you.
This paper, people in the committee here are putting names on the paper and talking about your people. Ain't you got enough nerves to walk up there and talk to them right there and taking the money out of school? I heard some people talking about their kids, grandkids going to school and everything. You're going to take money out of their kids, your grandkids. The guy took the money, he raised the money, he didn't ask much money for the school. He's always asked more money. Last guy did. Look how much we had to pay for him like that. I think you better leave the money in the school and leave it alone, because what you're going to do with an air-conditioned tire up, the roof fall in, catch on fire? How much, how much you think he's going to come now and ask for more money? He's got the money in there. You better leave it in there and leave it alone. Thank you a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? You may do so. Okay, seeing none. Our county trustee has approached me.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I need my computer fixed where I can see what the rest of your scene, please.
We don't have anything. Somebody help Ms. Green, please. We don't have anything showing yet. Who's with that?
I'm sorry, I don't have anything.
You need your, you need your monitor.
I mashed it and it turned off.
It's powering up, Kyle. It's powering up. It's saying no signal.
Just a moment, folks. We'll work through this. Mr. Green, we good to go?
Thank you.
All right. County trustee, would you approach, please? He has asked before the meeting if he could address us tonight. County trustee, you've got the floor.
Sure. Got some handouts here I want to do to the group.
First of all, what I'd like to say is, thank you for letting me speak to you, but this is unplanned, totally unplanned, from everybody's standpoint. He doesn't know, the mayor doesn't know what I'm about to say, anyone. Been privileged to some information last week, and as I kept hearing from everybody as I attended a meeting, East Tennessee trustees' meeting, and we were all talking about, of course, the number, whatever trustee's talking about is taxes, raising taxes, reappraisal and ratio. And later on, maybe you can learn about reappraisal and ratio, but they have a big, big impact on our tax roll and what happens to the citizen. So finally, after discussing it, and someone says, hey, Hamlin County, how you do you raise any taxes? No, we did not. I kept hearing, you're lucky, you're lucky, you're lucky, you're lucky. So I finally just called these people back up that attended this meeting, and I got some information for them here, and there's 14 counties here together, just to let you know really how we are lucky in Hamlin County. Honestly, we're very lucky. So look at the top of this list here, and I put them together. Of course, you see, we did not raise our tax here, so it's a zero. The second county down there, Greene County, had to raise her tax 38 cents. That even is applying to a reappraisal year. If you look over to the right, their tax rate was 201, the recertified rate went down to 127, and then that brought, the new tax brought it up to 165. Now, what that one is even more substantial is because that is during reappraisal. The property values went up in Greene County averaged 63%, okay? Union County, they're having to build some schools and do some things, 30 cents, plus they added $30 to their wheel tax. It's made its wheel tax $50. So 30 cents on real property and $30 on a wheel tax. Jefferson County, 11 cents increase. Hawkins County, they're doing it on the four-digit plan, so they were a little bit under one cent if they raised their taxes. Sullivan County did not raise taxes. Granger County, 5 cents. Hancock County, 49 cents, and that is also during a reappraisal year. That's substantial. That's huge. Cock County, they did similar to what we did in shifting some revenue in case of no tax. Flaburn County, comptroller's office had to step in over there, and that's a 30 cent increase for those folks. Union County, 26 cents. Carter County, 15 cents. And Johnson County, 40 cents on real property taxes. So, I mean, we're very, very fortunate here that we have growth, and we have sales tax growth, and we're able to shift it. So, I mean, we're very, very fortunate here that we have growth, and we have sales tax growth, and we're able to shift it. Because this year, basically, we would've raised, we would've raised our per, our, our, excuse me, our property tax twelve cents. We've been sitting here having to vote on that versus we were able to shift the money, or the mayor was able to shift the money. So I'm just giving you the insight. Fourteen counties, nine had to raise taxes out of fourteen East Tennessee counties surrounding us. The second page on which you look at, let's try to clarify something that gets really distorted and brought up a lot. And I did not know this. I did not know these numbers until becoming trustee, and a member of the COAG asked for a, a public records request, and Trish, she's here somewhere, she asked me to get ten years' worth of tax records, and how much, what the tax rates were for the past ten years, and how much the commissioners should raise the taxes, what tax rate they could. Well, I put together that list that you're looking right there, and I was just totally astonished. I bet I can ask anybody in this room right now, and they wouldn't be able to answer me, how many times county commission has raised taxes in seventeen years? Two times. Two times. In seventeen years, the commissioners have raised taxes two times. What happens is, and what people don't understand, is reappraisal and the appreciation value of your property going up. Property goes up. It doesn't depreciate as a general rule. So therefore, as the value of your property goes up, the portions you're gonna pay increases, okay? So every five years, we have a reappraisal year, as commanded by the state. If you come down that list, I want you to notice, and this is where it was brought up, um, in 2015 was a reappraisal year. That year, property tax value dropped. Historically, that's never happened. So what happens is a state certifies it for the county to maintain the same amount of money. The state, in the reappraisal year, raised our taxes fourteen cents. So that was reappraisal that raised it fourteen cents, it's not county commission that year. Come back behind it in 2017, as was spoken, the county commissioners did raise the tax fourteen cents. But why did they raise it fourteen cents? Well, our sheriff at that time sued the county over his payroll increase, needed more employees, need more pay, and he won a lawsuit, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar lawsuit. So now you were automatically, it wasn't you, but the group, had to put up that eleven cents. So of that fourteen cents, eleven cents went to pay that payroll to the sheriff's department that he had asked for, and it had been turned down, but he legally got it. Three cents was added at that time for the new justice center, so that made the fourteen cents. Then in 2020, come along, and the last commission, new commission, uh, raised it three cents at that point. So there's been three tax increases in seventeen years. One by the state during reappraisal, because something that happens don't normally happen, because usually, property value always goes up and your certified rate will go down. Property value goes down, then the certified rate goes up. Because during reappraisal, you know, we reappraise it, the assessor reappraises property in county. The state will say it becomes a certified rate. It's net neutral to the county. But we're, and you know, I mean, everybody, this is a hard thing to understand, folks, and I don't understand. You can look right down through here, this list here, and see what I'm talking about. I didn't believe it when I saw it, because my own self personally, you know, tax on the property, I have, it's went up forty-nine percent since I bought it in eighty-nine. But that's because the value of that property has increased, you know? I bought a property for a hundred thousand dollars, and now it's worth six fifty, so, you know, I'm giving you a ticket. And that's why you're gonna be paying more tax. And I just wanted to share this with you, because I saw it, because there's so many things. People say, oh, you raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes. Folks, they haven't raised taxes. I mean, seventeen years, they, the commissioners have not raised taxes. Your taxes have got readjusted about how you're paying taxes through appraisal, where the property values are. We're gonna get impacted big, big. Next year, we've got a ratio, another ratio will be applied to us, and we're probably, we're under a ratio right now. What is ratio? Ratio went after reappraisal, we're at one, okay? Then they come back and reap, they get a ratio. The second year, we're still at one. Third year, they come in and said, we are, Hamlin County, you're twenty-three percent below market value now, after we just reappraised. So the assessor has to reduce your personal property tax twenty-three percent, and that is on your highest taxpayers, your industry. That's your highest taxpayer in the world, go to topic. Thank God that our growth outgrew that and has that grown up. We're looking at coming back in, next year, we'll get another ratio from state. It's gonna be somewhere in the sixty percent range, maybe sixty-two in the range. In, in, in twenty-five, you people, we're gonna be going through a reappraisal here, and you're gonna see some super historical numbers, because, I mean, it's just simple. People look around, what people are paying for property, they're coming here. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's phenomenal, and that's what's inflating and raising value. So we will go through reappraisal. So if you've got a coin that you can sit on, I would advise you to do that, okay? If you're gonna need it in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Scotty, before you sit down, may I ask a question? Uh, two things. And we've talked, kicked it around with the committee meetings. Now, I know when they did the wheel tax and they voted on it before, and I don't, I'm thinking two thousand and two. You may have to correct me. They did a-
Wheel tax goes way back, way back older than that, didn't it, man? Because I brought that to mind. It goes back into the nineteen ninety-
Nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
Okay, and it was for three years, and then they had to bring it back up, correct?
Correct. Well, it somewhere got voted on there for, um, to continue.
Nineteen ninety-nine, the wheel tax was passed, and it was voted on in referendum, May the seventh, two thousand and two.
Two, okay. Thank you. So if I understand my history correctly, the county commission, not too long after that, they voted in, they gave them their choice for the referendum, wheel tax or property tax. They voted wheel tax, and they still did a property tax, but I don't see that on here.
I don't know, that's, that's what Ms. Noe has been saying, and I don't know exactly what year that was, it's true, but I think you're relating to the fifteen appraisal. The taxes went up, the reappraisal raised taxes fourteen cents. Then you turned around, the commission did raise it two years later, fourteen more cents. So that's an impact that people felt.
I think it was before that.
One by true, just, um, uh, reappraisal.
I think it was before that.
Is that probably the first time in history in Hamlin County the properties that ever went down? I mean, historic, or I think anywhere.
But I think it was before fifteen, okay? If, if it was voted on just a year or two while that commission was still in office, if I understand my math correctly, Scotty, it would've had to been within a four-year window there.
Yeah.
So it-
I can't say that, I don't know true to that.
Well, I'm, I'm just going by what the, and y'all know you're familiar.
All I'm, all I, Ms. Green, all I want people to understand is, I could not believe this when I saw this myself. County commissioners have not raised taxes in Hamlin County in seventeen years, but twice.
But they have raised them twice, and with our growth potential-
They've raised them twice.
Between sales tax and property tax-
This is not for discussion right now. He's giving us facts, not discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for answering, Scotty.
All right.
Can I give a little fact, Mr. Chairman, just real, really quick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll have to agree with Commissioner Green that additional property tax did come in very shortly thereafter of the vote of the referendum on the wheel tax. But if people want to look deeper into the reasoning behind that, that was the year that our governor withheld state shared taxes. A lot of those, the Halls tax and things, he kept them back to manage the state budget, and that was monies that the county was using towards our school budget. By state law, this commission, through maintenance of effort, must give the same amount that they have in previous years, unless there's a twenty-five percent or greater decrease in student numbers. There wasn't a decrease in student numbers. With the governor holding back those taxes, they had to raise revenue to pay for the school budget. They had no option. Again, that was a state law, and it was something that was out of their control. They did not intend on the governor coming up and saying, hey, I've been giving you this money that you've budgeted for, for the last decade, but now I'm not going to anymore. But you've got to cover it. And that was why that tax increase was done. Yes, they did. But it was because of, like you're talking about, where changes were made through the state, and you have to recover that money, because state law says you can't give less. So that was when that-
I just wanted, I felt compelled, compelled to just share that with you guys. I mean, from what other counties are dealing with versus what we're having to deal with here, I mean, we are blessed.
Mr. Trustee, thank you for your report. It's great information. Thank you for updating us with that.
And if you, folks, I don't think you need me anymore, I'm gonna leave. I have to, I got a family where I lost someone today, so I need to be with them.
I'm sorry, yes. Sorry for your loss. All right, we will now move on to, um, item three, nominations and appointments. The commissioners in your package, you'll see the health council, uh, county health department director, Ashley Lyons, and Mayor Britton have requested or recommended several names here. I'll read them off. One has been removed that I will announce. Charles Sutherland, Steve Ripito, Dr. Suni Ramat Passad, uh, Mr. Arnold Buntz, Lynn Mufford, Dr. Russell Reel, Dr. Michael Tan. These names have been presented for appointments of our county health board of health members. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Second. Second. Do we have a second? Mr. Long. So we have, Mr. Doughty, motion. Commissioner Long, second. Folks, this is off the board. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Any of these names? There is one name that was on the list that has been removed, and Mayor Britton has said that they will take that up later. They will ask for a dentist to be added to our board of health members. Let's call the roll, please.
Debbie Ahern.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Thomas Stoney.
Yes.
Ed Nigreen.
Yes.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hunsland.
Yes.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
And this motion passes. We'll now move to item four, calendar rules committee. Chairman, Thomas Doughty, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, it's approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item four B, it's approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes. That's all you got, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item five, we have none. We'll move now to item six, approval of the consent calendar. I need a motion.
So move.
Mr. Horner? Oh, we're waiting on the, yeah, there we go. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes. We will now recess as the Hamlin County legislative body and open up for a public hearing for seven A. Resolution twenty-three thirty-five, a resolution to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, of, by rezoning District Zero Three, tax map zero-one-one, parcel zero-four-five and zero-four-five-point-one, fifty-nine-oh-one and fifty-nine-fifteen, Brights Pike, Russellville, Tennessee, three-seven-eight-six-oh, from R-one to A-one. And also, item seven B, resolution twenty-three thirty-six, a resolution to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District Zero Five, tax map zero-four-nine, parcel zero-zero-seven-point-zero-one, Maple Valley Road and Sugar Hollow Road, Marsh Town, Tennessee, three-seven-eight-one-three, from A-one to I-one. Is there anyone here that would like to discuss these rezoning items? Anyone at all? Speak for or against. We will now close our public hearing, and we will now reconvene, uh, for the, our Hamlin County legislative body. We will now reconvene, and we will take up item eight A, the rezoning resolution. Get this, I get to read them again. We, we will go to item eight A, resolution twenty-three thirty-five, resolution to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District Zero Three, tax map zero-one-one, parcel zero-four-five-point-zero-zero and zero-point-four-five-point-zero-one, fifty-nine-oh-one and fifty-nine-fifteen, Brights Pike, Russellville, Tennessee, three-seven-eight-six-oh, from R-one to A-one. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Richardson. And Mr. Walker has seconded this motion. Is there any discussion on item eight A? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
And this parcel is rezone. We'll now move to item eight B, resolution twenty-three thirty-six, resolution to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District Zero Five, tax map zero-four-nine, parcel zero-zero-seven-point-zero-one, Maple Valley Road and Sugar Hollow Road, South Sugar Hollow Road, Marsh Town, Tennessee, three-seven-eight-one-three, from A-one to I-one. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richardson. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this rezoning resolution? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
And this parcel is rezone. Thank you. We will now move to item nine. I ask committee chairman, Bobby Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. Moving to nine, item nine A, resolution twenty-three thirty-seven, is the wheel tax resolution, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hold on. Please use your monitor.
Oh, sorry.
Chairman Doughty, you are recognized, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just really quick, there's really a lot of good ideas on the wheel tax, whether to, whether not to. My outlook on it, my opinion, and how I will be going forward, is as they talk about the wheel tax and then the tax increase, that commission, and I speak first hand on it, because my father was on it, and it hurt him badly to have to turn around and raise taxes. But it was because of the fact that they cut it to the bone. They did the bare minimum that they had to do to make ends meet. And then, when an emergency happened, as with the governor withholding state shared taxes, they had to raise property tax. There was not time to balance a budget and make other choices. I don't want to see us get into that position. I don't want to see us take everything we have this extra and put it in one pot so that we have no cushion there. I don't want to be put in a corner as we had been previously. This wheel tax increase will be a minimal amount going into paving the roads. As I've said and talked to Mr. Poole, it'll take a hundred and twenty million dollars right now if we did it. This is just a start. This is just a place. If we took the entire three million they're talking about that's extra in the schools, we still have forty years of it. It won't pave enough to where you'll know a difference. We have to get money that is ex, dependable, something that our road department can budget for, they can plan for, so they know what they're gonna get each year, so they can plan out with roads. And with this extra, if we have all this extra, we can roll more of that into it, as we have a couple of times in the past, to aid them with paving. But my opinion is, we need to have a definitive amount that they're gonna get, and it's, this is just a start. And everybody wants to harp- And everybody wants to harp that the first part of the wheel tax doesn't go towards roads. We can move some of these extra dollars into the positions that the existing wheel tax is paying as time goes on and roll it into the roads. That way, eventually, all of the wheel tax could be used towards the roads. But we have to make a start somewhere, and this is my idea of where it should be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Green, you're recognized.
Let me pass this out to you, please. If you don't care, pass that on around, please. What you've got coming around is what Mayor Britton passed out to us, so I know that the figures are accurate. He's very comprehensive in everything that he does. For the la- it shows for the last three years how that we have reduced, well, I said "we," the county commission, the property recs, the tax rate for the schools. Twenty-one, it was eighty cents. Twenty-two, it was seventy-one. Twenty-three, it was sixty-six. Twenty-four, it was fifty-four. Now, the school revenue didn't go down. We still made our maintenance of effort. We still meeting our maintenance of effort. And to be brutally honest, there's a slush fund there where they're getting more than what has been budgeted. In all fairness, just as Mayor Britton pulled twelve cents from the county property tax rate for the school budget and moved that twelve cents to the county general fund for the jail. Even as Mayor Britton moved the twelve cents, there is still a large bucket of sales tax money, there are approximately two-point-two million, that can be budgeted for the schools and swapped for the fourteen cents of property tax money for paving. Now, Commissioner House's plan would do that. It would give us a fantastic stop, start to it. It would do far better than the, than the wheel taxes. And it would not house the county anything. You wouldn't have a little tax increase. Your school budget, revenue budget would still be, still maintained. We're still meeting what we have to make, which is what we need to make. We need to, I'm a grandparent. We need to meet to take care of our schools. But this would take care of them. It would not take anything away from them. There's a reason I asked you to vote no on increasing the wheel tax. Adult Commissioner House's plan, if I understand what Barry Poole told me correctly, they cannot pave till next year. And this, the wheel tax won't start till December if I understood the mayor correctly, and if I'm wrong, please correct me at this point, because I'm human, I do make mistakes. But if we go with Ms. House's plan, we'd have two-point-two million dollars. Now, two things to go with Ms. Commissioner House's plan, and I'm very proud of her for bringing this up. If the wheel tax is passed, collections won't even start till December. You can't pave in cold weather if I understand Barry Poole correctly, and I think he knows his stuff. So it's unlikely that even a mile of paving could be done with wheel tax money till the next budget cycle. Even with a full year of the increased wheel tax collecting, you're only gonna have one-point-four million dollars. That's not that much, by what you're telling me, that a paving cost for a road, per mile, if I understood my math correctly. So if we stop the wheel tax, take a serious look at this in twenty-four, which is not that far away, folks, the years pass faster as we get older, but we could do the swap just exactly like the mayor done two months ago. We can come out with two-point-two million for paving. We would have a win-win deal, because it would be funded by the property taxes that we're already paying. We're not gonna put any more on the citizens. And I do agree with several of our constituents. It's a hard time for most families. Most families are barely making it. And that wa- it doesn't sound like much for twenty-three dollars, but I have heard from people all over District Fourteen, as well as you're in, sir, that it would be a problem. But it would be a win-win deal. Like I said, the current wheel tax, and Commissioner Doughty, you're a hundred percent right, the present wheel tax has never went to the road. It wasn't designated for the roads. And I'm like several other people. I really thought, because it said wheel tax, that's where it went. I was wrong. But we've got a twenty-year of history, that it's been shared between the general fund and the school fund. Now, the entire wheel tax goes to the di- to the general fund. So with the growth potential that we have in Hammond County, I got sales tax figures from Scotty today, they're up from last month. And if I remember correctly, we're in the tax-free grocery session right now, are we not? So if it's up, it's coming in, it's not going down. Property taxes are, are gonna increase. I looked last night, the section where we stopped to drop off Dennis's tractor, there was twenty-five new houses in there. That's property tax. Going toward Jefferson City, big place behind the Red Barn that we've had so many complaints about, there was thirty, thirty-five houses in there. That's property tax revenue. So please, vote no.
Thank you. Want one correction on the sales tax. Uh, we're not held liable for our portion of that sales tax, just so you understand.
Yes, sir.
The state relieves that seven percent that they collect, but not our two and three-quarter.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Howell?
Yes, thank you.
You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. I was looking at the resolution. If y'all will look on that page one, section one, I wanted to make sure, because Mr. John Coxon brought up a good idea. Except for motorcycles. So are, do motorcycles have to pay a, a wheel tax? Motor-driven bicycle scooters, our tractors don't. I just wondered.
Yes, they do.
They do?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to do that? They're kinda skinny. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm just wondering. Yes, they use the road, but they don't, uh, they don't take up as much as those Hummers and, and trucks and, and bigger vehicles, so I, I just wondered about that. Or even heck, a tractor takes up a lot of room, but they don't use that, that public highway quite as much as they do the farm fields, but, um, it might be an idea for us to say, maybe, um, if you're gonna do this, consider less for, for motorcycles. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Walker?
I've got a couple of things to say, and, and this has been hard, probably one of the hardest decisions that I've had to look at and make as a first-year commissioner. You know, you talk about motorcycles. The problem with that is motorcycles are considered a motor vehicle. I drive motorcycles myself. Probably have too many in my driveway. I've got four of them that I register every year. But when we start saying that a motorcycle gets a discount, then what do we do with the people that are now driving side-by-sides on the road? Those are considered a motorcycle. They're not considered a vehicle. You know, the people that are driving razors and, and gators and those type things, those are tagged as a motorcycle. They're the same size as my car. So we get into that thing. I mean, it, the fair solution is, if, if one has to pay it, we all have to pay it. I mean, we have to make a choice. It's a hard choice. You know, everybody has complained to this commissioner, complained to me when we were running, the problems is our roads. Where does that money come from? Nobody wants to pay taxes. I, I understand that. We talk about things going up. If, if we really wanted to say, raise our sales tax and keep our sales tax up, how many of our people in Hammond County go to Knox County to buy a new vehicle? Where's that sales tax go? It goes to Knox County, it doesn't come here. You have to register your vehicle in Knox County, so they can keep the money from your tags there. Okay? People talk about it's hard times now. You're right. And with it getting harder times, people are buying groceries every day, we're buying gasoline, but are we buying the big-ticket items that we bought? And as it gets harder, are those things gonna drop off? You know, so we can't count that the sales tax will always be this great. This is just an ideal, it's a solution. Just like we voted this in, we can vote it out. If we see this is not the answer, it can be voted out. Will it get voted out? I don't know. I'm one person of fourteen people here making a decision. The only thing that I can tell you is that if I vote for this, I will never agree to move this money out of paving. And we, as a commission, have to stand strong to say, this is where the money goes. It doesn't go to buying a new truck for paving. It doesn't go for buying a new garbage truck. It goes for paving only. And if we do that, yes, we can get something done with the money. Will it take time? Yes. It, it's not the overall solution. And if we have this extra money at the end of the year, we can add more money to it. But we can also need to have a piggy bank. Every one of us probably has a savings account at home. Our county's savings account needs to be bigger than what we spent. We don't know what tomorrow will bring. And that's why we, as a commissioner, have to make a decision, a tough decision. People don't, won't like the decisions you make. I have been called this week for people that says, I'm glad that you're gonna do wheel tax, as well as I've had people don't do the wheel tax. I've been called a thief this way, that I'm stealing from our citizens. You know, when we vote this, it affects me just as well as it affects every one of y'all out there. It affects everybody in our community. But you guys elected us to make the decisions and trusted us to make the decisions that we thought were best for our community, our area, and our county. You don't always have to agree with us, but we have to make decisions that people won't like. And at the end of the day, I hope you respect us when you leave. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? We have a motion, we have a second. Let's vote this motion, please. Commissioners, just to be reminded, this is wheel tax, it's a tax levy, it will take ten votes to pass, and this is first reading, basically. We will take this up again next month.
Eleven yeas, three nays.
And this motion passes on the first reading. We will have, the second reading will come in September.
Moving down to nine, uh, item nine B, interlocal cooperative agreement for Hammond County School Resource Officer Funding between the City of Morristown, Tennessee, and Hammond County. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. Commissioner Neesmith just stepped out. Do we, um, um, how can we handle that absent? There we go. That's it. He's absent for this vote.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine C, an interlocal cooperative agreement for county school resource officer funding between the Hammond County Board of Education and Hammond County. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine D, resource conservation technician position. I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Eleven yeas, one nay, one abstain.
And this motion passes.
Item nine E, Morristown-Hammond Healthcare System memorandum, memorandum of understanding. I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine F, a memorandum of understanding between the City of Morristown and Hammond County for the fiscal year twenty-three, Edward Byrne Memorial Jack Program Award, and I make that a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
This motion passes.
Item nine G, resolution twenty-three thirty-eight, a resolution of the County Commission of Hammond County, Tennessee, authorizing a rural tourism development grant application, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine H, resolution twenty-three twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing Hammond County to appeal for a Tennessee Highway Safety Office sponsored high-visibility grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Item nine I-one, Hammond County Board of Education Budget Amendment Number Two, increase of four million, two-hundred-seventy thousand, four-hundred-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine I-two, Fund One-O-One, Chancery Court, eight thousand, one-hundred-forty dollars, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion passes.
Item nine I-three, Fund One-O-One, Circuit Court, nine thousand, forty-six dollars, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion passes.
Item nine I-four, Fund One-O-One, Sheriff's Department, five thousand, two-hundred-ninety-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine I-five, Fund One-twenty-one, uh, excuse me, Fund One-twenty-two, Drug Control Fund, five hundred dollars. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion passes.
Item nine J, amendment to existing purchasing policy for obtaining quotes for purchases less than the bid threshold, resolution twenty-three forty, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Green? Mr. Green?
Just a question, sir.
Yes.
Now, that's all departments, that's not just the road, highway department.
That's what came out of committee, is for all departments.
Do all departments need that? I can understand the road, highway department, but do all departments need that, made it of an expansion?
I can't answer that question directly, I cannot. All you got?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else that would like to speak to this motion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yay, two no.
And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. Real brief, just to let the adult, adult leadership know, what, what you just witnessed, we, we had our committee meetings 10 days ago. We went through the business of these items, and we discussed these items, if there were questions, and we had 10 days to research and do whatever. Tonight, you see the final tally, or if there's any more discussion, but a lot of our work was completed 10 days ago at our committee meetings. And that's why you're seeing some items that come up and without discussion. So I just wanted you to understand that that's what we're doing. Item 10, Bulk Waste Committee Chairman Horner, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A, Bulk Waste Regulation Enforcement, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Howe?
Thank you. In real life, I am the slow-moving vehicle ahead of you, a person behind my husband's tractor and, and implement that's going down the road. And while I was doing that, I noticed this guy, he had the pickup, and he very neatly stacked up the boxes on the side of the road on Panther Creek, and I thought, because I had time, we were not moving very swiftly, and I watched him very neatly stack them up and then proceed to drive away. And I thought, well, he put it in a nice neighborhood, it'll probably get picked up. I am just not completely sure that our $30,000 program is going to be all that effective. We have a problem with garbage and waste here, and I hope that this addresses it, but I hope we also have a plan in mind that, that maybe if it shouldn't, we, we can look at this in a year and come back. I talked to the city guy, and they have teeth in their program, and, and I said, what's the secret? And he said, he gives the power to the codes officer, the codes enforcement officer. And so he goes around, snaps the picture, said, yep, that, oh dear, that's code one. Yep, that is, on that other picture is code three. He sends them to the office, and his assistant is busy doing the letters with the pictures. When he comes back into the office at, say, 3:30, there are five letters for him to sign, and by golly, the, the one who put the, the garbage out there has got a letter with an expensive bill attached to it if it is not cleared up in 10 days. So I'd like to say that we'll see how this goes, and, and if not, we won't have to reinvent the will, they've got a plan. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Mr. Green, you're recognized.
Chairman Cutshot. A quick question. If I understood Commissioner Howe correctly, this is took care of by the officer, so I'm assuming it takes it out of the hands of the attorney like we do now, which, from the complaints I've heard, takes a lot longer. So is it something we need to look at, of moving it to the authority of the codes enforcement officer to send the letters? That's just a question for thought. So we might ought to be able to enable them to do the job better, is my point. So thank you, sir.
If I'm reading it correctly, it says code enforcement will investigate complaints, take photos, prepare written reports, and the code enforcement will issue notice of violation letter to that person, that owner, giving them 10 days. Sounds like he's doing it.
Okay, I missed that part of it, so thank you for bringing it to my attention, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any more discussion on this?
This, this is a work in progress, and all that you ask is in the plan moving forward.
Thank you, sir.
It's one reoccurring thought that we all understand, it's, it's, it's a work in progress. We didn't get here overnight, and it's not going to be repaired overnight. All minds clear, let's vote this motion.
Thirteen yay, zero no.
And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, in the form of announcements, we are there, September committee meeting, September the 11th, 2023, September commission meeting, anybody wanting to return, September the 21st. Uh, let's see. We are cordially invited, as a commission, to our third district, our third judicial district recovery support services, their open house for our sober living homes. If you remember, we have, our county has helped with two homes, they're on High Street, right there at West Third, they're going to have an open house. If you'd like to attend that, it's next Thursday at 2:00 p.m., August the 31st. All minds clear. Any commissioner need any, any statements? Please leave your books. Thank y'all.